One nation, indivis- justice for all.
All right, Rob Hall. Bartlett. Ms. Graves.
Here.
Dr. Lewis. Ms. Rankin.
Here.
Mr. Stelzer.
Here.
All right, have you all seen the minutes from the-
Yep.
Yep.
Fork is rolled back in. Off. Back in and I- haven't to the- reviewing the village healthcare plan. Not in these notes, and so because of that, it's not in the committee.
He had actually already, I don't know what we do about that, but he had actually already ended the meeting before you called back.
Do you, so you-
It's already adjourned.
Okay.
It's already adjourned, so you want, you want added to?
We'll get that.
We'll do that. So.
Put it in the committee now.
Just put it-
So, yeah, the, um, the village healthcare plan.
Okay. So I need a motion in a second then to accept the minutes.
So, second.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Ms. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Palazzolo. Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Joe.
Jean.
Listen, I'd like to- Keys. Past Friday. She was the wife of Keys. Commission. And her long-term parents of this community here in nineteen thirty. Garden. She was a resident of the board. Found out she was actually a member of the Parks Advisory Board, and she was appointed by Don Shanks, believe it or not. Very active in the village church with her son Todd. If we just take a moment here just to think of Peggy, that'd be great. All right, thank you. All right.
Hi, I'm sorry, may I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Has there been any thought as the- some kind of- or some kind of- some way we- works done and the rest of the-
Uh, yeah, uh, I mean- in terms of- you know, I don't know. It's gonna be somewhat restricted, I would think, given the circumstances. But, yeah, possibly, yes, we should consider whether or not we would make a donation to, you know, something that she was involved in, likes, or was part of.
Or they have, if you want to, you know, to- something that would be important for her. So, I think that would be good, I think that's a good idea, Kelly.
Okay, we can definitely do.
Sure.
Ah. All right. Communication. Let her hear. The letter from- report, if you have any- that. Ask him. Just let her. May- in situating the council- in the meeting. Actually add- council. Wants to thank the lovely wife Debbie for providing- now last. We also want to thank Rossi Lewis and firefighters yesterday for Easter, and I must say it was an extremely generous act. We have received numerous food items, cards of thanks from a number of residents during the- a pizza. Each week, winners from the Marymont- pastries from Raider. Hand sanitizer was donated from residents Jeff and Suzanne Bischoff. The police and fire professions can at times seem to be a thankless job, but when troops are blessed, people that they serve- club up hold. All the dedicated time effort that our- put to serve this wonderful village with the very best service in the country, and I will second that. We are so blessed to serve this community and remain committed to excellence. Thank you and stay healthy. Chief Richard Hines. Thank you, chief. The, you've got the, from- got questions. Berg. Call hand. Raider. A hundred. Certain receipts came in. And also, let me mention two things. I had our solicitor- act, and it's just sort of a- two pages or so that I plan on distributing around to the local businesses here in our community in order to, you know, A, make them aware of it, and if there's any assistance that they- worked out between them and Ed if they need their assistance, but there'll be a lot of information on the sheet. So we have that, and then also I want to thank Bob Osman, who is sort of responsible for organizing this. The Five Condo Association Chairs in the Five Gray Week condos each decided to donate five hundred dollars for a total of twenty-five hundred dollars to donate to the police and fire to spend on material and equipment as they see fit. It was an extremely generous gift at this time, and I just wanted to mention that.
And we will have a formal ceremony acknowledging the gift when we are all able-
When we're all able to do it, yeah, I mean, we, we, we sort of had a handing off of the checks out in front of the building, but, you know, everybody had to stay back, so we were kind of thinking about maybe getting one of those big poster checks and having something a little bit more ceremonial when, you know, when it's quarantine is lifted. All right, so permission to address council, apparently we have not received any emailed questions or, unless you all have received some emails.
What about Mike Kittner's thing?
We will, we will get to that email, I think, during the resolution time.
Okay.
Okay, so for anyone that's watching us at home, if you have a question that you had wished to address to council, but for whatever reasons you didn't get- just email- any councilment or to the office, and we- as soon as we can. All right. Let's, has everybody looked over the bills?
Yes, I have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, that ad in the Inquirer.
Yes.
I was under the impression that was gonna be five hundred dollars each ad, and it looks like it came in over four hundred dollars more. So, I don't-
What, what line item are you on?
Um, I'm in miscellaneous, about halfway down the page. Inquirer Media. Legal ad for street rehab. One thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Yeah, I, too, was under the- it was to be- a total of-
One was- bumped to that.
Oh, okay. I'm outside space. If I can take bills and then I'll just-
Okay, and for a second, I understand tomorrow is the day that we receive-
Yeah, I have a call and I haven't heard back from it.
Okay.
I mean, like we said earlier, you know, they can drop them off.
Yeah, they don't have to come to the office, they can just drop them, either they can pass them through the window or put them on the table down below.
So I thought we, which, which project is this? I had thought we weren't going to send it out for bid.
Well, there was sort of a back and forth, you're right, we weren't, we were, we weren't, we were, the ad got placed, and I guess it was determined that we would go ahead and have numbers, you know, to work with.
At least get an idea, I mean, you know, somebody could come in really low because they want the work, somebody could come in really high because they need the money, so, you know, to just gauge where we would be.
Okay, but at this point in time, didn't we decide as a, as a village that we weren't going to proceed with the project, correct?
Correct, yeah, the, the project is on hold. If we, I would assume if we got a really low bid of some kind, that we might be able, like, the bid might be good, you know, for six months or, you know, you know, then we reevaluate at that time.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so do I have a motion and a second to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Palazzolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Joe. Mr. Stelzer.
Say it again, Joe.
I'm sorry, I had it on mute. Uh, aye.
Is that, is that commentary on what we're doing in here?
No, so we didn't hear-
No, I just, I tried to keep out background noise, I had it on mute, so.
Yeah, okay, Joe.
For my mic.
Okay.
Sure, sure.
Never mind.
All right, we don't have any committee reports tonight, so under miscellaneous, the scheduled council meeting for May the twenty-fifth, that Monday, will be held on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, because of Memorial Day. All right, so next.
Are you ready?
Uh, sorry.
Are you ready?
Yeah, yeah. Resolution for the paper street.
Yes, to authorize the sale of paper streets adjacent to sixty-five hundred Marymont Avenue. It's the second reading.
All right, that's the second reading, this is the time in which we're going to have any discussion regarding this that we would like to have. Uh, Rob, you will note that we've gone ahead and added that section into the resolution, is that satisfactory? Okay. Any additional?
I don't know when this- or, uh, when we put it out to bid, I think we should also talk about, are we gonna make it contingent upon, because the reason we're doing this is because there's supposedly gonna be a house that's gonna be built. So are we gonna make the sale contingent upon that versus just selling it outright? So I don't know whether that conversation should take place now, before we pass this, or we're all, if there's agreement or not to that, you know, just think we should talk about. Yeah, I just- see it in here, but I just- discuss, and I think that fits in with Kittner's letter as well.
Well, okay, um, I know I had a thought on that in terms of if we try to, number one, if we try to put kind of a restriction thing that you're suggesting, although I would assume there would be now in the reading, I don't know, something like that's legal, and then there'd be that issue, and then I think the, the thing, do we really want to limit ourselves in terms of those who could, if we put something like that on, I think we're drastically limiting those who would bid on the property.
I don't think, I would disagree with the word drastically, because I just don't think anybody- unless they wanted to preserve it or something like that.
That may be a reason, they may want to do that.
So then, so then, so that's where it gets into, I, I struggle with this, the one thing, I, this, because if we're selling- ongoing revenue for the village. With property taxes and with income taxes from whomever builds a house.
True.
If we don't do that, if we sell it to somebody who just wants to preserve it, then I don't know what my- well, but I'm not gonna- have other- you know, I, I'm trying to find for myself something that I can hang my hat on that says, here's why I support this, and I do support this, because again, I, I think it would be great if we had more people in this village who are bringing in more income on an ongoing basis.
Sure, sure. Option where we actually have a paper street that adjacent to the paper street. Not sure that we have a situation like that, you know, so.
But you could sell, again, Murray's a paper street, right? We have a street over there that's a paper street, and so-
But you have adjacent property, I think, on both sides.
Right. I'm selling that. Would be your logic. Sell this paper street. To some. Sell that one over.
Well, we might, I, I guess, depending- tested that- and presented us, you know, a circumstance by which they wanted to, to buy it, maybe we would.
I, I- so, in favor of- land. And- continue to-
Sure.
I'm in favor of-
The point- but I do legally have, you know, power to, to block somebody who would want to buy it and preserve it. I don't know the answer to that.
Joe and I have talked about it, Joe says, Joe has had lots of dealings with, with real estate and stuff like that, he says, yeah, you can make contingencies on stuff like that, you can put it on the title.
So we've run this- conversations been had regarding putting-
Thank everyone.
Let me, let me go through this review. The question about certain contingencies, uh, we- come back, you know, it's our choice. On there. A house to be, to whoever the trade to. The police gonna limit the- we're gonna put it- because there's one person that contingents- owner of the- or, I'm sorry, the date. The only one. Nothing we can do about it. Understand, Rob's- this can be put in place to assure that a house is- but the byproduct of- that be, we're only gonna have one bidder probably.
And, and, I don't disagree with that, I would disagree. There's, we're gonna- these other bidders, because I just don't think there's a lot of other bidders, who else is gonna bid on that land?
Well, we don't know, so why would we wanna?
I think that's been our discussion since the beginning, though, is we only expected property and vacating it was to generate ongoing income for the village. Mentees. Okay, yeah.
And the fact that we added in- council will on a final vote. Whether or not- ones bids in. Gives us the-
Everybody say, oh, we're not gonna do it because-
So to say when you want to post it to solicit bids, have that in the requirements.
Right.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's almost, I mean, I know we have to legally go through the bidding process, but if you're gonna put something like that in there, it's like we're, we're spinning our wheels even, you know, putting it out to bid, for God's sakes, because nobody-
But I think-
That's, like I said, I just see- impediment. May be a very- number, why would we? From, or from-
The only person- person- that that would-
That may be our- but that, you know, that- may in fact- that. There, you can argue with, hey, well, you don't know that-
It's, if our stated goal, which my under- was that- I didn't think it was- income, so we rate the- that's what it sells for. Self, will be in- a pro- if our house, what, thousand dollars a year would come in on property, or something like that. Come to- would eclipse.
Sure. Well, yeah, yeah.
So if our stated goal is to have a house built on there to bring income generated to the- it's in our interest. I would deter- them on- into the village from land. See what I mean? Or, it seems to- chance- the same purpose. Beginning.
Clearly been, right, the intent, the goal is hopefully to have a house built on that, right?
I will agree with that.
Yeah, it's, it, I mean, it's no denying, it would be, yeah, it would-
Yeah, the only reason we're doing this is because they're proposing to build a house on that, otherwise we wouldn't be having this conversation.
And I'm the first person who would rather have trees than a house, but if this is what we're doing, I'm obviously not standing in the way of it, however, if we're gonna- it, let's do- for the village. Those at risk. Pretty, and then not. Know- much.
Well, it's not exactly, I mean, you're, you're right, part of the end purpose would- immediate, not net. We would be put fifty thou- that, or is a second bidder. Like, you're not getting nothing out of this.
Yeah, but we're not, again, go, go back to the stated principle, the stated reason why we're doing this, we all- right? I heard anybody's- which- there, which we think would be good. On ongoing basis, we're all agreeing to that. So, and I disagree with you, there, there could be others out there, I don't know. Maybe the bill wants to buy it. Wants to buy that. You know, so- to buy the other- then, do it. But, I, 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 I just, I, I, again, I- moving off of, basically, this in the first place and saying, okay, well now somebody could come and buy it and- and get out of this while we're doing this.
I have a question for-
Yeah.
Builder, at the beginning of this process, you know, to chip buys it, then the builder, you know, it's builder, the- et cetera. We don't have controlling that timeframe, let's say, you know, this, you know, this coronavirus thing is, you know, slowed his business to the extent that he doesn't know when he's gonna build that house. I mean, what, I mean, do we have, and we don't really have any degree of control, he could say he intends to build a house, but we don't-
We can put any contingency into this process that you want, if you want to put a timeframe that- within twelve months, we can- again, a lot of this aren't into- here and very, is there ever a- this contingency, we're probably, you know, my, my feeling is we're gonna reduce the number of bidders. Out there. This contingency in. Why did you put? The one part?
I don't disagree with that, but I would, I would argue that the ongoing income stream in perpetuity. Way, the addition- I get out of opening this up to another who's gonna spend five thousand. Spend, nobody who buys that land and can't use it commercially, spend a lot of money on it.
Okay, but we're probably want- to having- somebody puts out fifty thousand dollars- somebody puts out $50,000 to buy the paper street than where we are right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So i- i- if, if we just say no and don't do anything, nothing gets built in.
But that.
Again, what I've heard is lock thing down. Is, you just don't get that sometimes. At some point, there has to be a level of trust that something's gonna uh, and in this case, you know, if we put this contingency in, I think we limit the, the, the bidders. And, and if that's what you wanna do, you know, that's your call.
Yep.
Well, what's your recommendation? I mean, your recommendation is not to? I'm just.
Frankly, and to me and sometimes decisions in life are coin flip. And you just have to kinda go with your gut about what you think is the right course.
Which way did your coin land?
With the six of us that are the interests on either.
One, one final thought. To me that we're adding unfair. We are as unless you're gonna and by doing nobody can build a house. As it really bid on this. We're you can't build a house.
Examining doing cause of that and he came to us.
I understand, I understand that, but I mean, and that, but you know, I'm sort of a little bit in this, this range. And now, you know, I think there should be a ability here and don't be so rigid.
No, I, so I think if 36 months to build a house on there. Chip could buy it, he can turn around, sell it to the builder and, you know, be done with it then. And the and has the to get it done with it time.
And if limit and build a house wasn't fulfilling that and back?
Yeah, I don't think putting a time.
A, a time limit is rude, that is really a, a, a stinker of an idea, I think.
Yeah.
So it's just open ended forever? Well, then, then you can have anybody bid on it. Then, 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 okay, so now your argument goes out the window that this is gonna limit people, because now you said there's no limit in when somebody builds a house. So they can buy, they can buy it and say, well, I, my, my heirs are gonna buy the house, I'm building me.
That only just now emerged. On about, you had on there, I didn't hear you say anything about it.
Cause it came up. Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks, Mark.
So.
What's the situation then?
And you can't force a builder to build a house.
Within a certain limit, I just don't, yeah, I just.
Especially in this kinda economic environment.
Disagree. And then I gotta be honest with the window to tell them time limit. Could buy that and say, well. So.
Not somebody if contingency in there that's out, house on in ask, really him and time limit, I mean, can I do it within 100 years, or then they can bid on it, I guess. I, it just seems that we're, we're layering on a layer of complication that we don't need. But if you afford, I mean, I, you know.
Talked about.
Here.
Again, the state we're gonna have on stream. There's a benefit upfront. But then I give it for us, because there's the benefit.
And was the intent getting? Bitch that.
Joe, you.
Yeah, good, I mean, you know, I, everybody at the uh, putting the or not putting and you know, the vote's gonna come down.
Let's do it this.
Wait, now contingency time. And there will be a I don't know.
I'm willing to.
Hop along. See how you can sell a piece of a street and say that, you know, you have to use, I mean, they can own, you know, Turner could just buy that because he wants it. Okay, I mean, how can you make him do the next step and sell the lot?
The sale of the property contingent on, you know, a house being built. And so if he doesn't build the house, he doesn't get the street. And we don't do the vacation. It's just a series of events that are, that are gonna occur. And, and, and real estate transactions, all the time, there's a series of contingencies that have to be fulfilled before the transaction occurs.
Right.
Does the dollars live?
Some sort of uh, and or to go through the contract. Uh, and we what deposit we want to, you know, you know, in essence, you, you, you sign an agreement with, with a deposit down. And then when all the contingencies are, you know, uh, fulfilled, uh, then in essence you can action. Different.
I think you're right with so is there you've all said, we're not voting for timing on it.
Okay.
So it's just, we're gonna put a contingency to the house being to be built.
Okay, let's just have a show of hands, those who want the contingency in. All right, all right, well, hold on here a minute, what, what?
Wait, what, well.
Judge. My hands are.
Three, three? Oh, Lord. How do you know my position? I've been, I've been advocating I don't wanna inhibit or someone's ability to vote on.
It's fine, go ahead and vote it.
I'm.
It's okay.
Yeah. Go, I, I'm gonna need instance to get home.
We don't have to agree on.
Second.
Oh, I think you're right. So where are?
Another really. We're on to the next one. So our next.
Yeah, we'll have the, yeah. Through. One is to fix a public hearing.
Wait, did, did, you wanna say anything?
Oh.
Probably need to discuss his. Have his bit for
I thought, I thought you had it in your hands. You.
No, I don't, I don't, no, I, um, Maggie was.
I have this is
Yeah, good. A little clearer, I can't hear it.
Well, she's gonna, we're going over Kit, Mike Kettner's email.
Yeah, you have it.
That's fine.
Okay.
I've got it in front of me here.
Okay, so it says, Joe. But attempted questions held to provide information on several of my concerns. Accordingly, I have attached my original email for the entire council to see, so we've already seen that, all of us, right? Okay. So I remain concerned that the planning commission council have not fully considered the overall impact of selling this paper street. I believe the central question is how many lots will be developed once access to these back lots is provided? Clearly, you are presenting this project as simply an effort by Mr. Turner to sell or develop the lot behind, behind his house. It is unclear ever whether allowing a driveway or a street. And if it is what situation with the trust shown as, as an adjoining lot? Is Mrs. Greater's lot also going to be developed? I gather from your sheet that there is a builder involved. Who is that? From my experience, I think it's unwise to rely on a builder's view that there are no soil erosion or soil moves. I understand how the village meant on of how many developed. What is however, I hope the council will consider how much a broader, how much broader discussion might be possible going forward. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, Michael Kettner.
Well, let's start with addressing the question of whether it's gonna be a driveway or a street.
Yeah.
It's a driveway.
Right. However. Back there. This driveway would then.
No, it would not.
There's only one back there and it's not.
Maybe two, there may be two.
Maybe two.
Yeah, at, at, well, because there could be a little subdivision going on back there. However, to access the one or the two that are back there behind his house and the
Kazer.
Kazer's house. You would access down, um.
Like the
the other round.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
West, uh, and the first. No, further east, excuse me, sorry.
Right, but that's where the soil's really
Oh, no, 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 it's mu, actually, it actually widens, it wide, it actually widens out back there.
Okay.
So a driveway would be more than enough.
So it would not be a shared
Yeah.
deal where it goes.
Is it, help me understand, cause I just don't know. So there's that shared driveway now that the Kazers and whoever, with the savages that live down there, but, you know.
They have easements on the paper.
Is, so is that the paper street then?
Yes.
Okay.
So really Kazers, to me, that's the other is the Kazers.
The one that's behind Kathy Grader said it would not be desirable, you know, their.
It's not very big. She's got her side and not like, it's like paper anyway, you know, it I don't know that you can.
They maybe access the teeny property, sell a teeny section off of to the and then or enhance, you know, the.
Only way to access that would then be on the right hand side. Right, right, which is the other way.
Their driveway is that way.
So it sounds like there's been discussion then, if we're talking about like, talking about using the other side of Turner's for that instead of this, it sounds like there's been discussion of.
Yeah, the discussion, that was, that was a question raised by other residents of the village.
Can, can, can I, can I just go back and do an overview on, on that whole question? The paper gives thing that we would be is the paper that is
Right.
All the other lots still have access to the paper uh, you know, that, that, that exists to this day, because you can't vacate a paper street unless you give half of it to the adjacent landowner. So that other lot that's owned by the Kazers has access to that paper street, and if we were ever to vacate it, they get half of it.
Okay. Just the only way it would work, anyway.
Yeah.
Go back and look at it.
Yeah. It's on this one.
Um, because original that Turner's front and she on the corner. Side is
I mean, I walk there, but it's
Right. Correct.
Kevin.
Um, so.
So I wanna make to process. You understand?
He does.
And she's.
I'm sorry.
My conversations with Kathy Grader, the informational sheet that I first passed out, and then Joe passed out an even more comprehensive informational sheet, which she has looked at and read as all the other adjacent property owners. It's pretty much all positive feedback, wouldn't you say, Joe?
I haven't, other than Mr. Kettner, I've not heard any other negative or question for, from
Okay.
Said any just the people that look gave them. We talked about that.
Her name, but I had, I
that he, he was here.
I think he and I had a very nice conversation with him.
Okay.
And now that he basically understands it, he had no objection.
Okay. Okay, he was concerned.
I did have one call from a resident who, you know, is adamant that we should not sell village property.
Right.
Well, and Larry and Nita.
They had
Okay, and then, um, yes, it's his question of whether it's to be a street or a driveway. So it's to be a driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then what is
the next relevant part? This
ability. Bit of a concern and also under the assumption, we know. I mean, skittish about this based on our other issues with soil stability in the village, but
Right.
um, I mean, I know the guy went out there and like at it and like solution where we have a core sample done before we let anybody purchase it seems insane.
When we said.
On them.
Liability once we sell it.
Okay, so there, so that's there.
Right, Joe, you, you talked about how you can put the onus on the buyer, just sit there and say, you, you know, hold
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's in the we're basically done his own soil test. Soil test, but he had look at it, problem. This building lot sits well back from the slope of the hill leading down to the creek. And if you look at the creek, so it's completely different from the other house on Merrymont Avenue. But, you know, we can, we can build into this transaction that, number one, the house stays on the building lot that's there right now. They don't put anything on the paper street on that side of the, you know, uh, of the, of the, uh, uh, of the, uh, lot. So the, the chances of anything getting, anything happening to that hill 500, you're probably slim and none. But again, we can make sure that whoever buys this holds us harmless.
Are, are we gonna, are, are we gonna, um, we need to make that known when they, when we put out the bid too, right? Need to let the people know whoever buys this, that the paper street you can't build on the, at least.
Why don't tell me they own the papers? You, you know what I mean? You, you, so.
They, 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 they get half this paper street from the vacation, they buy the other half from us. The whole street will be theirs.
Right. I thought I heard you, maybe I misunderstood, was you you know, you, they build back in the area.
Okay. I've been told have no but if I wanna put that in then
But and before you put it out to bid, once again, you gotta tell people what they're gonna buy. It's a good idea, I think it's a good idea to build, I mean, if they have the driveway.
What do you mean, well, Mr. Turner already has his driveway on part of the paper street.
Right, right.
Well, I think we're concerned about the part that turns onto hillside.
Yeah, that turns onto hillside.
It's, you know, not the part that's harmful.
Bear in mind, bear in mind, there, there, no matter what set of plans he comes in with, there are setback requirements, you know, to our building code, so, you know, he, there's no way he can possibly build up to the edge there. It wouldn't be allowed, you know.
And how far streets, so how far a setback is that?
Because I think yeah, 40 feet wide. Something like that.
Setback is.
Rear setback is 25 feet.
Yeah.
And I imagine that that with an adjacent lot.
You have different setbacks for rear, front and side yards.
Mm-hmm.
You have different setbacks for rear, front, and side yards, but, yeah, I mean, he would be able to position the house in such a way that it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't be near it. But again, that's, that's on here.
Okay, as long as we are indemnified, if the thing slides down the house.
Yes.
It's, if it goes down the hill, that's his problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, okay. All right, any other thing from Mr. Kittner?
Let me make sure, but I think not. Commenting on the traffic issues, but honestly, I think that has to do more with, like, if it were a street and multiple people were using it.
Yeah, I mean, what's gonna be the increased amount of traffic? Two cars, three cars?
Well, yeah, I mean, but he was. Houses and.
Sure.
Looks like that case, so.
Okay.
I, it makes a, driving to, or trying to, as we go, just like a philosophical kind of meet discussions broad and, you know, out loud and informing the public, which I think. I'll just.
Look at how the neighbors have been.
Yeah. From darkness or mask on.
To fix the, hi, for public hearing, budget hearing, public budget hearing, for the 2021 budget.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, it's first reading.
Okay, ordinance.
First ordinance, you wanna, you wanna read that?
Sure. It's the second reading, authorizing the purchase of new turnout gear and upgrade to the mobile data computers and purchase of chest compression system by the Merrimack Fire Department and to declare emergency.
Okay, that was the first reading, correct?
Second reading.
Second.
Motion is second to suspend the rules to have.
Okay, can I ask a question first? I know this is, I'm just asking this, like, there are gonna be daggers shot at me for this, but just because of current, you know, we're in a financial situation because we are not collecting a lot of the, you know, the payroll taxes, and we're gonna be delayed on the things that come from Ohio and the federal government, like, are these things that we, definitely, because now's, I had to throw one out. Don't have an opinion on it, it's worth looking, being very careful.
I, I did, I asked about that, if the chest compression apparatus. I thought it was.
Because I know he said not every community has it, it's not like we're the only, I'm sorry, I keep kicking this, like, I don't think we're the only people in school who don't have this, but just.
Right, right.
The other thing. Also have to be able to receive. Anymore.
The only. Wire.
Like, can you cancel it, or bringing this up because it's, you know, these are all expensive things.
No, it's a very good point.
Or delay it, delay it.
It's a very good point, you know, if it could be delayed or setback, I mean, it's not something that's.
I mean, I think if it's.
Would you order something before it's already, you know, before it's had its second? You know, I'm the newbie.
Think it should have been. I don't think it should have been either. Have we fudged the past and said it was?
If there was a. Getting that.
Raised or something, yeah.
Yeah.
But still.
Potential.
For sure.
For potential. So, okay, so we need to move the emergency.
I need, well, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and allow third reading.
No move.
Second rule clause, Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Palazzolo.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. Stelzer.
Hi.
May we have the third reading?
Computers and purchase compression system by the Merrimack Fire Department and to declare emergency.
All right, I need a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Dr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Palazzolo.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin. Mr. All right, I need a motion and a second to evoke the emergency clause.
No move.
Second.
Ms. Palazzolo.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin. Stelzer. The ordinance is adopted.
So this is. Again, capital plan before, the meeting might be. Pushed up, you know, the wire too much on this stuff, need to have proven to commission amendment in. Because we're sitting, you know, you need to get. About it really good, we need to. Did before.
There's a gray area because we proved it in the budget, we just, I guess, technically didn't.
Formalize.
Formalize it, so.
Well. We just. For that one.
Yeah.
A supplemental motor, oh, I'm sorry. License authorized. Number one, 10.12. Supplemental. And then, ordinance leaving a supplemental motor vehicle license tax and establishing a new Merrimack code of ordinance is number one, 10.13.
That's the first reading. Okay, are we, no.
Here he goes.
Got a bunch.
All right, listen, may I, may I make one request?
Yeah.
I, I know you have a couple things you want to bring up, but please, we're all sitting here in masks, I'm, you know, I can't see out of my glasses, so please, a little brevity.
Sure, so, well, one of the things I think we really need to do, we need to figure out a way that we can have committee meetings, and so, because things need to start moving forward. Joe has talked, Joe's looked at stuff where Facebook Live, they're doing it in Ripley, and, so, that's, that's a method, I think we need to agree, we need to free ourselves up to have committee meetings. Everyone's okay with. Means to. Residents can then tune into if they want to and, and watch it.
I'm good for as long as whatever we decide meets, you know, those guidelines that are acceptable by, then, yeah.
Yeah, and I brought those here too, I mean, Yost had those guidelines, and it fits all those, so, we're, we're good with that.
Only thought. Request, you know, that we kind of hold our committee meetings unless it's something that's absolutely necessary, pressingly important, because this particular system is gonna be difficult for a lot of residents. I mean, they're not technically, they don't have the equipment, they can't do it, or they can't get it to work, or for whatever reasons. So, I mean, I know there will be committee meetings that we're gonna want to hold, and I, I do believe this is a viable way of doing it, but let's, I'm just asking that we kind of hold them to a meeting until we get through this quarantine period and people can show up at the meetings.
Well, ideally, yeah, you can't have everything ground to a halt also.
Can't have everything ground to a halt, I agree with that.
So.
So we're good with that?
Yeah, and so I think, one of the other things, I think, we don't have to do it right now, but I think we should all revisit then the timelines, okay? We've all put target dates, or we should have target dates on here, so obviously they've been impacted. I think at the next council meeting, we ought to. Item and. And I think.
Just not. I mean, I read.
Some stuff I think we need to talk about, I mean.
Want to discuss it? You know, like if.
So, I think we ought to be doing that, and I think on an ongoing basis, we ought to have quarterly reviews about how we're progressing, you know? Again, we had some of that, we had just one, once or twice, but I think we need to have a drumbeat about making progress against these things, because there's a lot of stuff that's out there. Items on my list is to try and create an incentive program for creating park, parking on private property over in the historic district area. Bill and Marcy and I all met with Frost Brown Todd to talk about, and also, stuff. And the way we have it worded is, and Frost Brown Todd, I think was very, they really knew their stuff with that, they actually came up with that. Now, how we set this up, as we've said, if we're gonna use somebody besides Ed, council. To help address some of the parking issues over there.
Do we want to even ballpark an amount before we?
You want to cap it, you mean, or you?
Well, I mean, sort of given the unknown constraints that may be facing the village, I do think that we ought to have some kind of a spending limit on, on this thing, because this is.
That's fine.
An idea.
I think it was. Hour or something. So, I mean. Oh, yeah.
Might just get them to ballpark it, and then we.
That's fine.
Meeting.
I mean, I think it may. But let's get the numbers.
Because they may be more efficient, even though they're hourly rates more, they may just, you know.
Well, and to be very, I want to get it right.
Right, yeah.
You know, we're.
They're the people who know.
Kelly's having to clean up the CRA.
Subject.
I think you. Too, because they also have a lot of experience with CRAs.
Well, and I, yeah.
So, anyway, just a suggestion, your call. The, the other thing I need to add, I think now I need to start adding to. Insurance, because that comes up in August, it has to be passed, I prefer not to pass it as an emergency, because I'm backing into the schedule. Or, no.
Renewal. Late June or July.
Hey, Rob, let me, let me add this, what I remember when I was chairman of the Finance Committee many years ago, is you have a tough time getting quotes, goals, each time.
Okay, but that's.
Insurance program, yeah, they're not gonna give you, you get closer to the renewal date.
That's fine, but what I'd like to also have a Finance Committee meeting for is I've gotten some of the liability insurance coverage that Terrace Park has in Columbia Township, and I was gonna ask Fairfax as well, so we can see, what, you know, how does our coverage compare to their coverage? And I think have that. So, as it is, is to say, does everyone. They provide, so.
But can't you just, that's gathering without a committee meeting? We, we. We ask them. But, we're just using a couple.
Matter. Okay? Because it has to. Recommendation. Again.
You always.
Think it's been passed 20 years now.
Yeah. Anyway. Board. Finance Committee. So, I'll, I'll send you the target and for that. And, no, one last thing, I think. The waste. Year you ran.
Camera.
In committee, yeah.
Yeah.
You, you got shifted onto your plates from someplace else as well, so, because actually, per the, per the, our code book, it says health and rec is supposed to handle waste collection. So I don't know how you feel about it, but it just, I mean, because you've got a lot on your plate already with stuff that got. So, the code book says health and rec to do it. Year you did it.
We can have that conversation with. Information. It's time. That determine.
Okay, but it's, but it's some, put it on. And all the other things you talked about.
And two things need to come off of mine, these have been. They're already voted through. Thinking there were too many things.
I, I should, the shake should come. Yeah, well, I could. So, so, yeah, if you please take. Committee the whole. The committee of the.
Parking thing is redundant.
Public Works, you already.
Can that go into Marcy's?
If we have any businesses left, but.
Yeah.
Well, and the other municipal building additions addition. Target, two months is not.
Given, we're, we're. Roadwork. Now, so, I mean, again, I just, I think we ought to clean this stuff up.
Proposing moving overnight parking, Homewood into Public Works, is that correct?
Well, it's already got, well, no, and that have the whole meeting. That I had. Open complaint. Not legislated.
That's been put. Because it's about whether or not. In our order, able to park overnight or not.
That, that actually does, that, that's already in Public Works, so.
Okay, well, she said put to bed, and so I was like, wait a minute.
Specific to Homewood. It just needs to be wrapped up, because, you know, it's been addressed. I don't want to have any problems anymore, so we just think that we need to have a meeting. As comfortable with it, with the, leaving the parking the way it is. I mean, we're not gonna make any legislative changes to the way the parking is set up.
Well, I don't know that that was put to bed, I mean, we never, we never voted on it, we had said we were gonna have more discussion, I think it's part of the.
That's what I'm saying, we put it to bed by voting on it and saying, yeah.
But I would not say that that's the decision that was made, that we're just gonna leave it as it is.
Well, I think, I think you're gonna address. Village. I think one of the issues we've noticed is you can't do one street by itself, just like Petoskey, can't you, one street by itself, you gotta look at it holistically, like you said, again, from a present standpoint, if you're saying you're gonna do something here, what do you turn around?
It's part of the village-wide, whether change the ordinance as village-wide or not.
So I can take that out of committee of the.
My take is, it's, it's not done, but it's redundant.
Yes, I can support that, I wouldn't say that it was done.
And the municipal building renovations, I mean, again, should we continue to carry that on there?
Can we table it though?
No, because, I mean, we're not gonna do any, we're not gonna do any work on this building, given the current situation.
Especially given the current.
So do we table it, or do we take it?
I'd just say, take it off for now, and it can be reapplied at some future date when.
We have to vote to do something with it?
At a more opportune time.
No, I think. Rules of. If anyone disagrees.
Yeah, I think it's just.
Here's my, my, we're taking it up, obviously, we just. Own concern is with three. We know, you know. Situation. We would attach. Can't deal with now, I mean legitimately, we can deal with it right now, but.
But we could have a conversation.
To them, you know.
Yeah, we can have conversations.
Yeah, maybe we just change the date to the end of the year, I don't know.
I mean, I don't think we're.
Changing target date and still having to. On it. You know, I. And doing what's a renovation. Out, even though it's not. Leaving. Agree with that, just target date.
Twenty-one.
What do you think, Max?
I just, I mean, the firemen take, they felt very strongly, they came in here and said, you need to pay attention to us.
Yes, yeah, I agree with you, yes.
We're facing extraordinary circumstances and things like this, I'm sorry.
We just can't afford it, right.
Gonna be moved down the priority ladder.
Um, okay, so for.
We're just movement to it.
This is, this will be my thought, is. Thought we were gonna do this. As far as, like, if you're looking to develop a comprehensive plan, like, you know, what are, what are, you know, with regard to parking, with regard to business development, I mean, is that something that benefits from being in the committee as a whole? You know, we've talked. Go piece, and we don't have a comprehensive plan about parking, we don't have a comprehensive plan about street repair, we don't have a. Does that benefit, do those topics from being in a committee as a whole?
Hey, we never did anything in the committee. Give them their.
Okay.
So, but to your point, though, I think you're right, that, that what we have with comprehensive parking is in Public Works now, and so.
And it makes sense for that committee to do it, and then bring it.
Well, no, if, if you look at what's in.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just overnight's in public, right. Back, maybe the whole have just.
So I think, I think it would make sense.
Then you would. Go to council.
Proto.
Just to. This up. We good?
Yes.
Leading adjourned.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, bye, Joe.